First I'd have an approval of the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Well, hold on, we have any changes to it, do we?
No, except for the, we can't approve the June minutes.
Okay, so we have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Please call roll.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ellen?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for June 24th of 2024. I see that we do have one, two, we do not.
No.
We do not, so cannot approve those. What about September 23rd of 2024? Do you have a motion to approve or any changes first off?
No change.
Any changes for the people who are here? All right, motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, please call roll.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ellen?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I'm staying. Okay. At this time, we'll hear the first case, case 2-224 PUD for Waterfront Estates. Paul, staff, will you want to read the statement? All right, as chairperson, I get to delegate who reads the PUD. Two pages, so please bear with us. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees, and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions dis facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify, after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As previously stated, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized by the chair, speak into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is to be directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, all persons who may give testimony this evening, please rec- stand.
Mr. Both cases.
Yes, both cases, please. Raise your right hand and swear. And swear or affirm. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God? Thank you all very much, Mr. Chair.
At this time, we'll have staff give their report.
Thank you. This is a continuation of case 224 PUD. This was heard last month, and the zoning commission requested additional information. So we'll go through some of the slides, the pictures, just to refresh your memory, but we won't go through the detailed staff report. We'll just pick up where we left off.
And for the record, I did view the, I read the minutes and I did view the videotape, so I'm up to speed.
Thank you. The applicant is Kit Houston of Taff Law Firm, on behalf of Laura Kitzmiller, Deborah Weigel, trustee Brian, and Melissa Anderson, Jeffrey Ruby, Brandon Ruby, Thomas Edgar, trustee Justin Evans, trustee Coldstream Estates Development LLC, who are all the property owners. The location is along Waterfront Way, and it's all seven lots in the waterfront, in the estates of Coldstream subdivision. The request is for approval of a planned unit development, a PUD for an existing subdivision, primarily for the purpose of having a gate placed across a private drive in lieu of the public street. So the tract size is about thirty-five and a half acres total. One point three acres would be in a new lot eight, which is, would encompass the private drive, so thirteen point sixty-nine acres in, to be in a conservation area. Currently, there's furniture along Ayers Road and Kellogg Avenue. In the topography, the building sites are primarily flat, but then there's a steep decrease in grade toward the river, toward the south. Currently, it is a subdivision under construction with two homes complete. So again, a little bit of the history, we'll pick up from where we left off last month in September. Move on. So at the September 23rd, 2024 zoning commission hearing, the zoning commission continued the case requesting copies of the additional information. This was a copy of the proposed declaration of covenants, easements, and restrictions, details of the design of the gate, and how it would function with the Knox box, an ingress and egress maneuverability study for emergency access, landscaping plans, clarification of the conservation area versus the no-clearing area, and then clarification on the utilities, who, the public versus the private responsibility for the infrastructure. So this is the Cages map waterfront, this is Ayers here, that goes into Riverfront Estates. This is the Waterfront Way, and then this is the Carriages at Coldstream. So this is a PUD as well to the north. It is zoned AA PUD. This area here was the Coldstream Estates subdivision, I'm sorry, I keep getting, it's changed a couple of times, Waterfront Estates at Coldstream subdivision, which is zoned AA, and then the Riverfront Estates subdivision here. So it's seven lots, and then their proposal for the eighth lot, which would be the private street. These are the homes that are under construction too, which are occupied and complete. The zoning map, all of it is zoned, single-family surrounding, except there are a couple pockets at the corner of Asbury and Kellogg that are zoned retail. This is the proposed PUD plan. Again, lot eight would encompass the road, which would become a private drive, seven other lots that are buildable and under construction. There was a blue line, and then the red line. So the blue line would delineate the no-clearing area from the blue line to the red line, and then the red line would start a conservation area, which was a question from the zoning commission. This is a design of what the gate could look like in several different options, as well as the landscaping area around the gate. And this is the landscaping plan, and a maneuverability for the fire truck or any large vehicles trying to bypass the gate for emergency access. These are some of the drone shots that we took looking, this is generally toward the west and toward the south, the river and the cul-de-sac. This home here is part of the Carriages. This shows the existing clearing area down toward Kellogg and 52. So this is Ayers coming in to the Riverfront Estates subdivision. Again, these are in a separate subdivision, which is a separate PUD Carriages, and this is the entrance into Waterfront Way. We just took pictures of the homes on the street, so you can see they are in various stages of construction. These were some from September. We did not take updated photos for this month. And then again, this was a garden that had been installed that we had discussed at the last meeting. So for the findings, we'll go through the additional information that was requested from the zoning commission. So the first item was a proposed declaration of covenants, easements, and restrictions that included the conservation area, because the draft that we had received last month did not address how the conservation area would be treated. And so emboldened with staff's findings and also information that was submitted from the applicant. So it did state that the HOA, the homeowners association, would be responsible for maintenance. They would also, not only, they would be responsible for all common property, including maintenance of the conservation easement area. There was also language regarding the no-clearing zone, which stated that if those no-clearing zoned or the conservation easement area were to be modified, it would require a review by the township. Staff is suggesting that the language be modified to the zoning commission as an adjustment to the PUD, not at a staff level. The second item with details in the design of the gate and how it would function with the Knox box. So there were multiple designs submitted with the gate, and again, along with the, how the Knox box would function, which is a standard Knox box operation. Went too fast, sorry. An ingress and egress maneuverability study for emergency vehicles to bypass the gate that was submitted. The township's fire and rescue department did review this and is not satisfied yet that their fire truck could get around the gate, and they're also not satisfied yet with the materials. And there has been some discussion even up until today between the applicant's engineer and our fire chief. Our fire chief could not make it tonight, so you can ask questions of the engineer about all those conversations. We haven't been fully up to speed on the latest. There is not. I think there has been discussion that the fire department would be most satisfied with the operation of the Knox box versus trying to do maneuverability around the gate. They would prefer to just go through the gate. So landscaping plans, that was also submitted, and then clarification of the red line, which is the conservation, and the blue line. So in the submitted letter, the applicants are requesting the ability to still be able to further clear between the red line and blue lines in case any of that vegetation does grow up and blocks the view of the river. So they are requesting that those two remain as part of the PUD plan. And then clarification of public and private infrastructure and utilities. Anything essentially behind the gate would be the responsibility of the private owners that live there, regardless individually or the HOA. And this is outlined in the declaration of covenants and easements that were submitted. So based on that, staff did not change our recommendations in the staff report. We felt the recommendations were still the same. The applicant did address the additional information that his own permission was requested. So I think if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to take those. If not, we can open it up to the applicant.
Did we close the public meeting last time?
We did, but we requested additional information, so did we?
Are we going to limit it just to those six issues?
I believe that was the case, yes.
Okay.
Just those items of the new information.
Okay. At this point, questions for staff? Dr. Baker? Commissioner Ehl?
Just a couple for Paul or Sarah, or Mallory, or Gary, which is if we do approve the PUD, I'm looking at page two of the staff report in the bullet points. Just wanted to be clear what would be comprising the PUD, which is a copy of the covenants, easements, and restrictions, details of the design of the gate, the maneuverability study, maybe, it sounds like that's still an open question, the landscaping plan for the entrance, the overall plat, I guess, it has the red and the blue line. I'm saying that is what would, if it's approved, that's what would comprise the documents of the PUD.
The only thing I would want to add to that is the, so we've received a copy of the proposed declaration of covenants. I think if you did want to, or leaning toward approving of it, we would need to see a recorded copy before we move further. So this was just a draft, and we did review the draft.
Okay.
But it would need to be a recorded copy.
And, let's see, and also, there would be potentially conditions that if there were modifications made, then the declaration should have that reviewed by the zoning commission.
Yes.
And then the fire department is not quite satisfied yet, so we'd have to address that somehow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rother?
No questions to staff, thank you.
Paul, I had a question on your, your recommendations point two. You're saying it is not consistent with the vision, the goals, what was specific?
Yes, and that was discussed somewhat at the last meeting. Staff felt that this was a standard subdivision that had already been approved and developed as a subdivision that we were going backwards. The goals of a PUD are to protect hillsides, protect the vegetation in the area, encourage development that's clustered. This went in without those protections, and now coming back after the fact, after the fact for a PUD. So it's already been developed, it's already been cleared. The zoning commission didn't really have any, in reviewing the PUD, they didn't, or...
Based on that, we had approved the PUD earlier.
We had, and then it was removed, and so the development went through without any controls of a PUD. It just went through the normal subdivision process.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. All right, at this time, I'd like for the, whoever's speaking for the applicant to come up, state your name, your address, and your affiliation with the case.
Hi, Kit Houston, Taff Law, 425 Walnut Street, 45202. So I know the hearing's technically closed on the matters discussed last month, but just to your questions, Mr. Chairman, this does, no zoning matters have ever really fit neatly into the tests. They're malleable, they're flexible. What the township's getting out of this is a conservation area that currently exists. The property could currently be clear cut, and does no long, no longer has to maintain the roadways. So that was kind of the high-level clip notes of our response to that portion of the initial staff recommendation. So that leaves us with the six items and the amended staff report, so I'll just run through those quickly. We do have the engineer here, we also have an arborist here, if needed, to speak about the trees of the property and the tree line. So in regard to the declaration, we're not opposed to having Anderson be a necessary party to an amendment. Gary, I just don't know if the township wants to get in that business. Maybe we would limit that to just the tree line issue, if that's the interest of the township?
Well, anytime there's a major modification, obviously it comes through the zoning commission.
Okay.
And I think with Paul's position, which I agree with, is if there's a change to the red line, basically, or any of the covenants that go with that, it would be in front of the zoning commission as opposed to just a staff decision.
That, that's fair. I don't think there's any opposition there. We just didn't know if it was for every term of the declaration or just that tree line.
No, no, that was just for the tree line.
That, that, I certainly don't think there's an objection to that. So I think we can move on to item two. The multiple designs of the gates, I think we gave you five or six. I believe that all of those are acceptable. I think they're all from the same company. If there's any of those that the commission is opposed to in specificity, maybe we just state that here, so we know.
Was there a ranking of the six, in your preference, for security, functionality, aesthetics?
No, sir, I think I got seven clients here, so we're gonna have to talk with them. Yes, sir, but I can't tell you, it'll be one of the ones from the publication we sent you.
And can you give us your version or side of the discussions with the fire department?
Yes, absolutely, and actually, engineer had the direct discussions, so I'll let him speak to that. But it's our understanding, so we will still need pavers for Greater Cincinnati Waterworks. We found an alternate product that I have literature on. I don't think it'll be necessary to the board's decision, but it's not the product referenced by the fire department, but it is directly rated and advertised to hold fire trucks and has a more aesthetic appeal. You can't see the pavers, basically. I'll let the engineer speak to that. But it's our understanding, the fire department's position is the Knox box itself is alone enough to satisfy the fire department. So the paver should be a non-issue. That's really just an issue for Greater Cincinnati Waterworks, is my understanding. We can put testimony to that effect in that conversation on here in just a moment.
And Kit, the, the manual operation of it, the emergency, is that something that's within?
I'll defer to the engineer on that. I, I might, it was my understanding that Knox box was really the only requirement, so. So we've been through the gate designs, the landscaping plan, I don't think anyone's objected to that. I believe it's right there on the screen. And so the, the line, just one clarification on the plan, the, the blue line is the existing tree line, and the red line's the proposed no-clearing zone. I'm unaware of any present intent to clear trees. In fact, I believe they would have cleared the trees before they made the application, if that was the intent. There needs to be some flexibility to maintain healthy trees, and I believe the arborist is here to speak about that. If we have a diseased tree, and obviously the river views are what's driving the need for this line, and that's directly correlates with property values and tax bases for the, for the township. So we, we hope that that's acceptable. If there are questions there, let us know. And I think the final, the private responsibility for the, for the water and other facilities, I think, is no longer an issue. So unless there's any questions of me, I will call up the engineer and if needed, the arborist for, to answer questions for the commission.
Just a quick question maybe for staff, on the final point about the responsibility, is that something that needs to be signed off, or is just needed from the township saying, from this point of demarcation, it's private?
It was in their covenants that stormwater, so the township was concerned with the roadway and the stormwater utilities, and that was addressed.
Yeah, we went through great lengths with the city to get all of that approved.
Okay.
That's what's taken so long.
Questions? Okay. Would the engineer like to come up? State your name, your address, affiliation.
Richard Arnold, McGill Smith Punchin, 3700 Park 42 Drive, Cincinnati 45241. And good evening, Mr. Chairman, Zoning Commission staff. I did speak with Chief Martin at 2:35 this afternoon, and because we've been having discussions back and forth about the, the application we were going to utilize on the emergency access, but he stated to me that as long as we had the Knox box worked out, that he didn't need it to use for emergency access. I did confirm with him, and hopefully Ms. Donovan can also confirm it. I asked him, had he relayed that information to Ms. Donovan, and he stated that he did. So I'm gonna go based upon that. But what we discussed was, you know, as long as there's a Knox box with the ability for him to get a key to get through the, the gate, that would be satisfactory. And that exhibit right there is not, now, the, the line work for the tree, the cleared area and the no-clearing zone, that's correct, but that exhibit is not the latest one. The latest one we submitted to, and if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to read the Knox box notes into the record, if I may. There were some notes on the drawing that... Thank you. So Knox box notes, installation, the Knox box will be installed on the gate or near the entrance. It could contain keys, key cards, or access codes for the gate. Access, only authorized emergency responders such as ambulance, firefighters, or police officers have a master key to open the Knox box. The opening will be fabricated so that the township's master key may open the Knox box. Emergency use, in an emergency, responders use the master key to open the Knox box and retrieve the gate key or access code. This allows them to quickly and safely enter the property without forcing entry. The Knox box will be provided in a manner at the direction of the Anderson Township Fire Department, so we'll continue to collaborate with the chief and come up with a solution that makes him happy. Yes. All right. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up, speak on behalf of the applicant?
We'll, we'll make the arborist available if the commission has questions. I don't really have any.
Do you have any questions for the arborists? Appreciate you coming, no questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
I think you have to offer to anybody in opposition.
Okay. Anyone out there who's been sworn in, would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move forward. We will now close it again, and discussion among the commission. Dr. Baker, comment?
You know, I'm satisfied by the technical elements, but I won't support it because I really think that it is not in, it is not consistent with the vision in general. I think private gates are a bad look, anti-democratic, and elitist, and I'm not persuaded that the security concerns cannot be otherwise addressed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ehl?
I don't have a lot to add. I appreciate Dr. Baker's comments as well. I agree with him to some extent as well, but I, I think based on the information that we've received, it reinforces where I was last meeting, which is basically, it's pretty clunky zoning case. We had a PUD on it, the PUD got taken off it, and now they want to put it back on for the gate. I've got some sympathy for the applicant's position, that they have a lot of people interested in driving down that street, a very beautiful street, but of course, there's some privacy concerns in that area, and I think the gate could help resolve that to some extent. As far as the plan consistency, yes, we didn't, didn't have a say on it when it was approved, and there was some clear cutting, but this, this plan does give some protection going forward to the hillside. As we've been talking about it, we would have another look at it, perhaps, if they wanted to change that. And I think that as far as the Knox box goes, it's rather commonplace for that to be the preferred entry mechanism for fire departments. More normally, you see those on a building itself, and so they are comfortable putting those on buildings where they might be right up in the emergency. It does require an additional moment for them to stop and unlock the gate, but the fire chief, and I would say the practice of most fire departments I'm aware of, they're rather indifferent about that minor delay, if that is something necessary for the development. So like I said last time, zoning, this is kind of a clunky way to have to deal with what is really a security concern, but I would be in favor of putting the PUD back in place to accommodate this particular and very unique situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rother?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I do want to thank the applicant to providing some substance behind the application and I do want to thank the applicant to providing some substance behind the application and not just, "We want to." Okay, so thank you very much. I also agree with staff and the other commission members, this is sort of a backwards approach to zoning an application of a PUD. And it would have been nice if it was done upfront, so we could understand. But at least we have some idea of what the gate may look like from the different options that are on there that staff can use for final approvals, which I didn't think we had last time. You know, we do have covenants and restrictions in place for the Conservation District. There has been, from what has verbally been told, discussions with the fire department. I go back to the fire chief's comments last meeting of NFPA and code requirements, and that it's very well-defined in those two documents of how that gate should operate toward the fire department access. So even if verbally it's a Knox box, but NFPA and code requirements require something more, or even if the fire chief comes back and says, "I want a manual sort of override," that that be in place in any sort of motion that we may take, just so it's not all tied to a Knox box and we're back into an operational sort of thing. You know, the bypass, it is interesting. Now, it's just a Waterworks access, so no fire department access. So I don't know if Waterworks has the same concern about the actual capacity of those systems, because I know there is a variety of different systems and how much weight they can handle, and making sure that Waterworks, if they are requiring it, has some sort of idea of what they're gonna, so you don't have five Waterworks trucks sunk in beside your gate, okay? You know, it might be something a good tow truck driver would love, absolutely, but, you know, something to keep in mind as you're going through that design. Also, you know, I agree with staff on any changes to the Conservation District covenants and restrictions, that that has to come back through the PUD process, since really, that is what the applicant is offering the township for a PUD. You know, that's one of the only things that's sort of an offer of, you know, a PUD requirement. So as far as in favor or opposed, I mean, really, it depends, I think, on the motion and the final vote. So that's my, thank you very much, Chair.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would entertain a, like to entertain a motion, make sure we cover staff's recommendations, and then it appears we've come to agreement on most of the six issues outside of the gate and the fire department. So I would like to see if there is a motion to include something about agreement from, a mutual agreement between the fire department and the applicant. Commissioners, anyone? Propose a motion?
I'll make a motion, but am open to any supplements that other commission members may have. I'll make a motion to approve Case 2-2024 PUD with the submitted guidelines or requirements of the plat defining the Conservation District, the covenants and restrictions that were submitted. Those covenants and restrictions, final, should be a recorded document provided to the township for record and for reference in future. Any changes to any of the covenants and restrictions directly related to the Conservation District, and any impediment into that Conservation District would be addressed as a major modification to the PUD and go through the township's major modification PUD requirements, okay? That the gate conformed to all applicable codes and NFPA requirements, as agreed to with the fire chief, but not sort of supplementing or taking away any of the restrictions from NFPA or any code requirements. And that the gate also have a manual override. The gate's aesthetics should be no less or not deviate from the A through G that was submitted to the plan or the commission. The bypass turf area to utilize a pavement that is acceptable to any user of it or proposed user of it. That acceptance would have to be in a written format presented to the township. And also, staff sort of requirements that are in the recommendations, and there's sort of a variety of different, I don't know how to incorporate those unless you want me to read each individual numbers, but sort of in their entirety. Looking for some guidance on that.
I think we've taken evidence of concern. Sir, we have that. Anything else? Anyone want to offer amendments to the...
Can I make a clarification? I think the amendment, or I'm sorry, the motion should refer to the no-clearing zone as opposed to the Conservation easement.
That's the red line.
Yeah, the red line, basically, yeah.
Yeah, so I will, sorry, sir. Anything that referenced Conservation District truly would reference the no-clearing area as defined by the red line on the submitted plat.
The only other thing I would offer, I don't know if it's necessary in your motion because we have the documents, is I may have missed it, but the landscaping plan that they have submitted for the front of the gate would be incorporated as part of their PUD document. I'd offer that addition.
I would accept that addition. And that would be reviewed by staff.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Full call, please.
Dr. Baker?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Gauthier?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Passes three to one. Thank you. We'll take a second if you folks want to exit before we go to the second case. If you have any questions, please call staff. All right. Thanks for your patience this time. At this time, we'll go to the major adjustment to the PUD request of Case 1-2024 PUD for 5315 Beechmont Avenue. Staff, would you give your report?
Thank you. The applicant is Mahaly Savastakis of Bayern Becker on behalf of Wawa, on behalf of Robert Helston, trustee, who's the property owner. Location is at 5315 Beechmont Avenue, and the request is a major adjustment to the PUD that was approved in Case 1-2024 on January the 22nd of this year. The request is for the construction of a 6,372 square foot Wawa fuel and convenience store with 41 parking spaces, dumpster enclosure, landscaping and lighting with an impervious surface ratio of 67.5%. So a little bit of history on this property. The original building, the one that's there now, it was constructed in 1973. The last use of the property was a BP gas station, which closed, we think, around 2002. As stated previously, the zoning commission did approve a PUD for a Wawa, which was slightly smaller in square footage at 5,919 square feet with 50 parking spaces, and it had an impervious surface ratio of 81.4% in January. With that approval, there were five conditions. Number one, that the two parcels be consolidated, and that has taken place since January. Number two, that a lighting plan be in compliance, and that was also revised and brought into compliance. That the dumpster closure be brought into compliance, that was also brought into compliance. That any retaining wall exceeding four feet in height shall have a fence on top of the wall, which was brought into compliance. And then number five, that any retaining wall on the property shall have architectural detail and not just be a flat cast-in-place wall. So all of those conditions were met, and a zoning certificate was issued in May of this year. To refresh your memory, this is the site. It's at the corner of Beechmont and Elston. This is Beechmont here, and then Elston. This is the signal that also goes into the Skytop Apartments, as well as Big Ash Brewing. And then across the street is UDF. This is the aerial and the topography map. As you can tell, the topography, there is steep topography as you go from the north to the south on the site in question. And then directly behind, this is Spendle Hill that goes up the hill to several apartment complexes. These are the sites that were taken, updated since January. This is Beechmont Avenue looking up the hill, the former BP store, and this is looking at the site in question. This is looking at Elston. Is it right past this site, it actually enters into the city of Cincinnati for a while, and then you enter back into the township. These are some of the drone shots that we took back for the January meeting. We did not take new drone shots. But you can see the back of the site. This is looking toward Beechmont Avenue. Again, this is Elston and Spendle Hill, and this is the new Little Miami Connector Trail. This was Phase Two that got ahead of Phase One. Phase One's actually under construction now. Phase Two, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. Phase Two is completed. Phase One is under construction. More drone shots, looking back at the site, again, Elston, Beechmont, this is just from another direction. This is kind of across Beechmont Avenue where the creek is and the detention is for the apartments, looking back at the site. And UDF across the corner. So this is a revised site plan. Essentially, the applicant stated that the previous plan, the tiebacks for the retaining walls were going across this property here, and easements were going to be needed. However, they were unable to secure those easements for the retaining walls. So therefore, the retaining walls had to be moved in. Everything needed to be shifted on the site. So in order to do that, they flip-flopped the site. So the retail and the convenience store portion of the site was moved closer to the corner and flip-flopped with the gas and the fueling pumps, which are now proposed to be behind the fueling. The access points are pretty much still the same. The parking has been modified slightly as well. This parking now is on the side and kind of toward the front, and again, along Elston.
So the access is through Elston, off Beechmont?
There's a right in, right out, right in, right out off of Beechmont. So that's what this is right here. This is the right in, right out. Full access is off of Elston. ODOT and the county engineer have reviewed the site. They are requiring improvements to Elston, which is this turn lane here and that turn lane into the site, so there will be minor widening of Elston. There is also coordination with the city of Cincinnati and ODOT regarding a bike trail that is going up the Beechmont Hill. So additional right-of-way was required to put in that bike path here at the corner. So that bike path is shown here on the plans. But that is the major change from the last site plan that you all saw back in January. It was flip-flopping the store and the fueling pumps. Because of the new location of the building, there are additional variances that are required. Six fuel pumps are still proposed. This, the footprint of this store is still actually larger, which is at 6,300 square feet. And then sidewalk on Elston, sidewalk was not required on Beechmont because of the bike trail that was proposed. But a sidewalk is proposed along Elston. This is the landscaping plan that was proposed, some landscaping along Elston, and we'll get into the retaining walls in the grading plan. This is not in full compliance with the landscaping plan, just due to the tightness of the parking setback and then the retaining wall, and then interior landscaping up here, as well as landscaping along Beechmont Avenue. And it's very hard to see on the slide here, but in your plans, there, as with the last plan that you saw, there are large retaining walls on this site. So there is a retaining wall that will go along Elston and along Beechmont in the front. This wall is about 10 feet tall here at the corner, and then there's a large wall that starts along the back, and at the highest point around here, it's close, it's between 15 and 20 feet tall in the back. Again, it's hard to see on here, but essentially, the front of the site, if you go back to the drone photos, the front of the site is being raised, the back of the site is being lowered. And that's how you can tell with the retaining walls. Again, the right in, right off, or right in, right out. And this is the retaining wall that is being proposed with this application. These are the elevation drawings. This would be the front, which would be facing Beechmont Avenue. This would be the back, which would be facing the fueling canopy. This is the, sorry, the left elevation. I believe, this is the elevation that would be facing the retaining wall, and this would be the elevation that would be facing the corner of Beechmont and Elston. So if you're at the corner of Beechmont and Elston, this would be the corner that you would be seeing along the side there. These are the signs, is similar to the last, and I do want to talk about signs a little bit more with zoning compliance. Put them all in here. The free-standing sign is the same as what was proposed before. It's a monument-style sign that would be proposed on Beechmont Avenue, near the right in, right out. This was the fuel canopy that had the signature design that a variance was granted at the last zoning commission hearing for the height. So with the PUD, we first look at zoning resolution compliance. These are the articles of the area that is not into compliance. The first is the front yard setback of the building. The applicant is proposing to have a setback of 13.25 feet on Beechmont and 16.04 feet on Elston Road, where 30 feet is required. Article 5.210 is regarding height, and this is for the height of the gas canopy. It's proposed at 25 feet 2 inches, where 18 feet is max permitted. Article 5.3D1D, this is regarding the setback of the parking area along Elston. A 10-foot streetscape buffer is required at the right-of-way line, and the applicant's proposing 5 feet, and this is to a future right-of-way dedication. There is additional right-of-way due to the widening of Elston, and then due to the retaining walls, the applicant's proposing 5 feet versus 10 feet. Article 5.3D8B, dumpsters and trash handling areas are required to be out of the front yard setback. So the dumpster is proposed at 26 feet, where the maximum, I'm sorry, the minimum setback is 30 feet. And then signage, Article 5.5, this is for wall signage. 250 square feet of wall signage max is permitted. In the staff report, we had put 440 square feet. That's what was submitted on the drawings. And then the applicant did make a clarification that these were calculated slightly different than the last time. So when we recalculated the square footage, it actually came out to 386.56 square feet for free-standing versus 440. And the last variance for wall signage, because this was discussed last time, the variance was 337 square feet, so... They're still above, correct. Sorry that I did not keep my PowerPoint up to speed. And so the applicable plans, we won't go over this too much because we felt like this proposal is still consistent with our comprehensive plan, the Anderson Plan, economic vitality, land use and development. We feel it is compliant with our Trails Plan. We talked about the Beechmont, the trail going up to Beechmont Hill into Mount Washington, as well as connecting into Little Miami Connector and sidewalk on Elston. Design guidelines, again, we do feel it is also compliant with design guideline recommendations for landscaping and architecture. The two things that we did want to bring to your attention, the January meeting, the retaining walls were discussed in great detail, especially with the design. And based on the conditions, staff and the applicant worked through a couple of designs and came up with one we felt was consistent with the zoning commission's condition, and we issued the zoning certificate. What is proposed with this application was that picture that I showed you, the flat cast in place. And we feel that that's not consistent with the zoning commission's recommendation discussion at the last meeting. So we would recommend if this is approved that that condition remain. Pedestrian circulation, we felt like it was in compliance. So as far as recommendation, staff was recommending approval of the PUD and the PUD criteria. For the variances, staff was recommending approval of the variances that are listed here on this slide. The front yard setback for the building both on Elston and on Beechmont. For the canopy height of the fueling station, that was discussed and issued at the last meeting. General design requirements for the parking, staff was recommending a variance for five foot setback versus the 10 feet. The number of plants meet underlying zoning requirements as far as the number of trees, the number of shrubs. They are clustered in different areas to take advantage of the wider streetscape areas versus the area where there's retaining wall and there's less width to get that in. But we felt that there was a good compromise, even though they could not meet the letter of the landscaping requirements of our parking. They were still able to get landscaping in at this site compared, considering the amount, extensive grading and the retaining walls. Dumpster and trash handling area, it's at 26 versus 30 feet. However, it is a solid screen. The building materials of the enclosure match the building materials of the store. And it's also screened by evergreens. So due to, and it's, it's going to be on top of a retaining wall. So it's not going to be in direct line of sight from Elston. So staff was recommending approval of those variances. Staff was not recommending approval of the signage. We felt that it is a, with the building, with variances being requested for the setback of the building itself, it's closer to the roadway. It's very visible. It sits on top of a 10-foot retaining wall. That extra signage isn't warranted for this particular. The staff was supportive that the 337 square feet from the previous application be withheld. And again, there is a free standing sign, but that is compliant. So that is the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And we can go back through some of the elevation drawings if you need to see some of the areas that they need variances for.
We'll start at this end. Commissioner Gauthier?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Jury, do you know which of the two lighting plans they're proposing that was submitted?
The lighting plan we reviewed was compliant.
I think there was two in the packet.
There were two in the packet. That's interesting. Well, I have to ask the applicant to explain that. The lighting plan that we reviewed was compliant.
And I think my other question is quite good, Anthony, also. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Relief?
I don't have any questions for staff. The report made clear a fairly complicated case and I understand where their recommendations and proposed conditions are.
Commissioner Baker?
You know, forgive me if this is going over territory that's already been settled, but you know, as we saw the pictures and the retaining walls and I read that, you know, we're gonna, this is gonna be more than the amount of impervious material than is recommended. You know, it sort of sounds like a big concrete bathtub, you know, with the, and so, you know, I'm not an engineer, but it did make, give me pause as I listened to it this time. So I don't have some definitive opinion about that, but it did give me pause and that's, that's really the only thing that I have concern about.
Okay, thank you. Paul, is there any, the signage where we have a code and they're asking for more than we had granted before?
What was the magic behind the 337 that we approved last year? We don't go into the news.
The, there was some reduction of, and I don't have this, well, I'll be back in this folder, the sign package that was submitted. I'll let the applicant speak to that, too. One of the confusion for this supplemental was how the Wawa and the bird was calculated. So township staff was okay with just calculating the Wawa and the bird separately. And that's how we came up with, instead of 440 square feet, the
Three six.
386 square feet, which was much closer to what the zoning commission approved before. I think with this, the other difference this time around, and the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was one of these two things that took them over, or maybe both of them.
The calculation?
In the calculation, correct.
Second question, what is the width of the bike path?
At least five feet?
Yes, it's over five feet and it's been reviewed and approved by ODOT. It is slightly, there is a pinch point down toward the intersection, but that was in order to get it in between the retaining wall and also allow for a right turn lane in. But ODOT and the city of Cincinnati have been working with the applicants on that design.
Okay, thanks. This time, would the applicant like to come forward, state your name, address, affiliation?
Good evening. I'm Patrick Warnamet. I work for Wawa 260 West Baltimore Pike, 19063 in Wawa, Pennsylvania. I won't go through the Wawa spiel because you've all heard it before. We're still the same great company we were before. As you can tell, this site is extraordinarily challenging, which is probably why nothing's happened here for a long time. Putting the building at the corner is not totally unusual. We do have some municipalities that actually require it and they call it like this new urban kind of idea that I don't fully understand, but we have actually been required to do that several times. So that's not completely unusual for us. One point, the impervious area actually went down a fair amount compared to the previous plan. So like I said, the site's very tough, but there's less retaining wall than there was on the previous plan. And you'll see, Bear Becker, our engineer, we've been coordinating with the Anderson Arts Commission to come up with some great idea to make this look really neat and try and look at this as an opportunity to do something cool that either can accentuate the township or Wawa or whatever, you know, happens there. But it won't be plain gray concrete. And it's a fair amount shorter than what it was before. So and the increase in, we had a slight, we used to call our prototype U-59. It's now called U-63. It got a couple hundred square feet bigger. So basically on the backside of the building, there used to be some ins and outs and now it's just more flat. But and on the signage issue, I think we can meet the 337 and maybe replace a couple of the signs on the side of the building that we call art panels with glass or something to get back to that number. So we're happy to work on that and get there. So.
Okay. Questions?
So could you clarify the front elevation and rear elevation and which side is gonna be, you know?
The second one down is the one you'll see from Beechmont.
Beechmont Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. I see an ice machine and an LP storage.
Yes, and we could probably move those if that's, you know, something that could be a condition or something, certainly, we can figure that out.
And then is the sort of light tan box on the left side of the elevation, is that your electric service entrance?
Light tan box on the
Between the two vaulters?
Oh, yes, that's like a mechanical room.
Okay. So, you know, there's other locations in the area that have electric service on that sort of public view side and it's rather unsightly. You know, there's sometimes a meter, there's multiple service boxes, you know, what
Sure.
What could Wawa do to, you know, aesthetically, make that aesthetically pleasing, knowing that that's the major service entrance?
Um, I don't know. I've never been asked that before, but we'd be, I mean, if we could put some shrubbery or something in front of there or something, you know, as long as it still functions, we can do something like that, certainly.
And with the slope of the canopy, which is gonna be a high side, the northeast, west, south?
It would be the side away from Elston.
Okay, away from Elston.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know directionally what that is, but we never have that high side point. One of our competitors did the inverse of what we did and their high side always goes towards the public right-of-way. So we actually have a trademark on our canopy now.
And then there was two site lighting plans that were submitted. Do you know which one you're looking to implement?
I don't know what happened there, to be perfectly honest. We will be compliant, I can tell you that. So
So you'll be compliant?
Yes, we will absolutely be compliant with light standing.
You don't know the reason why there was two submitted or?
It may have been some confusion with the previous version in this. I don't know, but we, we got it completely redrawn and I think the one that I have in my folder is compliant. If there's anything that needs to be clarified there, we can certainly fix it.
So the fixture types will be as submitted?
Yes.
Because I think the fixture types were the same.
The cutoff, downward facing, yes, all that.
And the pole heights, we have maximum 17 foot on a six inch base? That's noted on each of the two plans?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
That sometimes varies a little bit, but yes.
Right, and then you would be compliant with, you know, in essence, lighting limitations that
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Now that's all the questions I have for you right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Relief? Commissioner Baker? Just questions, just if approved, when would you have construction? When would it start? When would it end?
I'd say demolition and site work could start early part of '25. And then we'd be open in the early part of '26.
And what are the hours of operation in the store?
24 hours.
Okay, and attended?
We have minimum of three employees at all times. So even like that nighttime, you know, we have minimum of three. If it gets down to two, they shut the store down.
Okay. Anyone else to speak in support? Please come forward. I assume you were sworn in?
Uh, yes.
Okay, state your name and address and affiliation.
Yep, my name is John Bear with Bear Becker, 6900 Tyler'sville Road, Suite A, Mason, Ohio. Where the land surveyors, engineers, landscape architects, transportation engineers on the project. Maybe just one point of clarification on Patrick's note. I don't know, Paul, do you have the slides that I sent over? I wouldn't mind just showing maybe one photo here.
Do you know which number?
I do not, but it's maybe four, I would guess. Nope, keep going, two more maybe. Yeah, that's good, right there. So as Paul detailed in his presentation, the previous application that came through had a very similar setup. Along Elston, there's a wall that's about 10 feet in height. And then the more southern portion of the site, the wall previously was about 30, 35 feet tall. The new application is roughly 20 to tapers down to 15 and zero in certain spots, but at the tallest, about 20 feet. When the zoning certificate was provided for the previous application, there was a textured concrete shown there. Since that time, the developer has been in contact with Anderson Township trustees and connected them with the Anderson Art Collaborative. And they're, they would like to pursue the opportunity to potentially do a large mural on this wall instead of a textured surface. As we provided in the previous presentation, when Wawa comes to a community, they try to partner with local charities for their charity events and other things. It's just another way that they're looking to partner with local community people to provide an opportunity there. So the ask would be to modify the condition to allow such as artwork within that in Paul's slide there.
It would be artwork and no Wawa signage?
That's my understanding, that it's not planned as a Wawa specific, but more a work of art that would be collaborated with the local artist. But certainly something we could, with our staff.
Yeah, we'll commit to not putting any Wawa themed stuff on, the no pictures of hoagies or coffee cups or anything like that. So but if the township wanted to put something that, you know, township history, river flowing through, whatever it is, you know, we'll work with you on that and come up with something neat.
Paul, do we cover a lot? I know we have
No, no hoagies.
Do we have any zoning, what can and cannot be?
Yes, there is, it is defined. Sarah actually helped draft it in language, so she can explain it better than I.
Yeah, so we have definitions of both commercial and non-commercial signage. So any mural has to be non-commercial signage. It can't have logos, what you sell, anything like that.
So I think that's the only point of clarification I have unless anyone has any more engineering technical questions for me. Great question. Yep, I did not explain that clearly enough. So two walls, right, the one along Elston being lower and the one along the southern portion of the site being up higher. So the lower wall is gonna be some sort of block type texture material. That's what was approved with the, I'm sorry, that was approved with the prior zoning certificate. It may be a different material, but that would still be a textured block. The upper wall would be as the picture is depicted here and that would have the mural on it. So if you're standing on Elston, you would see the block wall. Above that, you would see the canopy and then beyond that, you would see the mural.
Okay, so Sarah, just for clarification, when we get to the, what we're gonna say about the mural, do we, is there a process? They have to get approval or we just say commercial, non-commercial?
So this hasn't been vetted by the art commission. This was a discussion that was held
I didn't know we had an art commission.
Well, we do have a steering team. Yes, we do have an art steering team. This was a discussion that was held outside the zoning commission. And we relayed, staff relayed that it was a zoning commission condition. So the zoning commission is the one that needs to make that decision if that condition is modified or not.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Sure, whether it's a formal requirement or not, we'd like to cooperate with the art commission and not just put something that Wawa thinks is cool up there. So
We're in some new ground here, Sarah, just to be clear.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
Can you ease my mind about drainage?
I will try to. So as Patrick said, compared to the previous iteration of the site, the footprint is reduced. Within the site, there's less paving, less impervious surface. So that's generally a good thing. And then from a drainage standpoint, the site meets the drainage requirements of the county. So there'll be underground stormwater detention and water quality within a, like a pre-manufactured stormwater system within the site that then drains to the storm sewers under Elston. So the drainage is all headed the same direction that it is today, but it'll be through an underground stormwater system on its way there. If that gives you enough information, I'm happy to elaborate further if need be.
Do you have any history of the site with, since it hasn't been occupied since 2002? Any, and you're, and you looked at its development, was there problems in the past with drainage?
We're not aware of any drainage issues necessarily in the past. But the county's requirements have you look at that, a pre-developed condition, which is before the prior developments and then provide stormwater based on that. That's kind of our comparison.
Does that help? Did you have another question? Any other questions from the commission?
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
I'll just add one thing. We actually had Hamilton County Storm, oh, sorry. We actually had approval from Hamilton County Storm on the previous layout that we'll now have to redo. But they had approved the permit and calculations and all that before, so.
All right. Would anyone like to speak in opposition, please? Have you been sworn in, sir?
No, I'm an attorney.
Okay, then, we understand that then.
Providing argument and asking questions tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sean Suter. I'm an attorney, Suter LLC, 1502 Vine Street, fourth floor, Cincinnati, Ohio 45202. I'm here tonight on behalf of Kane Group LLC. They're the owner of the apartment building that sits directly above this site. 2558 Spindel Hill Drive. They're the party that Wawa approached about getting the easement for the tiebacks for the wall. My client refused that easement to grant that easement. My client continues to have concerns about the hillside. Now, my client's property is in the city of Cincinnati. It's right over the line. I don't think that excuses the township from considering my client's concerns. One, because it is an adjacent property and one of the, one of the standards you have to review is whether development will be detrimental to the present and potential surrounding uses. This has 48 apartments. It's been around for decades. My client has owned this property for 14 years. So there are 48 people, families, living directly above this site. The second reason I think it's important for the township to consider, my client's The second reason I think it's important for the township to consider my client's concerns here is the hillside. This is a significant cut. The hillside is in the city of Cincinnati and partly in Anderson Township, but the hillside supports my client's building. So obviously, you own property on top of a hill that's being cut in twenty-plus feet. You want to make sure that it's being done right, obviously, because I can imagine my client checking the basement every now and again for cracks and wondering, is this moving because of this situation? The other issue and concern my client has is about blasting. I don't know how, what the soil is, and maybe the applicant can provide some information about that. Is there going to have to be any rock removed, blasted to make this huge retaining wall? That alone can cause foundation issues. I do think that's a public health issue. We have forty-eight families living there, even though they aren't residents of Anderson Township, they are your neighbors. The other, there are several other issues here that my client would like to address. You know, he's not opposed to the land use necessarily. There is a UDF not too far from there, understands that Wawa is a good company, he's not opposed to a Wawa. But as the Wawa representative stated tonight, this is an extremely, quote, extremely challenging site. It is really tough. And as much as we want maybe a Wawa, it sounds pretty cool, I know it's a popular, popular place. Sometimes you have to question, is this the right place for it? And I think in an extremely challenging or very tough site by their own admission, building a twenty-four hour facility with a twenty-foot plus cut in the hillside. I do think there's a lot of pavement, I agree with that, and the lighting being right below forty-eight residents, I think is a concern. So those are the concerns and the inquiries we wanted to bring to you. So the hillside certainly is a concern, so I'd ask that the applicant address that. Obviously, if there are issues with our building, that's not going to be good for anyone. The lighting, Wawa has kind of a unique canopy, as you know, you've granted a variance for it. It sort of slopes up like this, right? So my client's question is, and he can't quite tell from the plans, and maybe the Wawa representatives can answer this, is where is that, how is that situated? Is it going to be situated such that the lighting is focused towards my client? But the last thing my client wants is for their longstanding apartment building to all of a sudden glow in the middle of the night due to this. And I don't think Wawa wants that either, but we just want to make sure that the lighting is appropriate for adjacent residential use. The third thing, I don't know if you're aware, but the BP station did go through environmental cleanup, I believe. According to my, my, my understanding, I, I'm not testifying to this, but this is my understanding, is that it went through environmental cleanup, tanks were removed. There was a no further action letter from the state DEPA. This was music to my client's ears as the owner of adjacent property, right? No environmental issues. I go to sell the property, I get refinanced, I don't have to do a phase-two environmental assessment, which is time-consuming and costly. My client is concerned with the reintroduction of underground storage tanks here, that it's going to cause problems not only for my client, but for adjacent property owners that are going to now have to get a phase-two environmental assessment every time they do anything, because once the property was clean, now we're introducing underground storage tanks again. So these are real issues for the neighbors of this property. Again, you know, it may be a great business location for this, but it is a really challenging site, and I ask you all tonight to, and if the, you know, the applicant could address some of these concerns, to help address these concerns and give my, my client some assurance that this is not going to ruin their investment.
Okay.
Thank you very much, yes.
Would you stay there for a second? We have any questions? Okay, we would invite the applicant to come back up, and thank you for not addressing the applicant directly, so.
Yep, thank you.
Would you like to address those points, please?
Oh, certainly. Paul, do you mind going back to the site plan? Um, so, yeah, so in the corner of the site that goes up to Copper Hill, you see where that all, area's all white right now? Where we used to have pavement and everything going back there? Yes, right in there. So we're leaving that area undisturbed at an expensive cost to us. If we started up at the property line and sloped it down at three to one, we would make our retaining wall substantially smaller. Terricon is our geotechnical and environmental consultant here, they advised against that because of the stability issue mentioned. So there's an enormous separation there now, so we're basically taking the wall and just stopping where we need it to stop, rather than sloping that down. I mean, we'd save ourselves, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars if we did that, but would open up a lot of risk, so we are not doing that at our own expense.
So you're not cutting back into the hillside twenty feet, or?
Not any further than where that retaining wall's shown. So, and like I say, if we started at the property line and came down to the three-to-one slope, which is typical, that retaining wall would be much, much, much smaller. So we're basically spending a lot of money to be safe here. I will note that the neighboring property does have a storm pipe that drains water onto our site, which we've not forced the issue with them on that. They also, to the south, there are several parcels that we're going to acquire as well and not develop, there'll be some retaining wall tiebacks that go on them. They encroach into that property a decent amount as well with parking, dumpster enclosure and such, and we haven't forced that issue either. So we could, I think, if we wanted to, but we have not thus far. The lighting's going to meet the code, no questions asked.
Do you, I mean, is there, is there deflection can on the top of it? Can you speak to that, or is it? Our problem is we have conflicting or two lighting plans.
Sure, I, I don't know which ones you have, to be honest, so. But, yeah, we're going to meet the code, yes, under the canopy, the lighting is more intense than around the periphery, but, I mean, you could, you could put literally any business here, and there's going to be more lighting than there is today. So I think we got to go by the code, which we will meet.
Okay, and now there was one, a third one had to do with the environmental.
Yes, we've done a phase-one and a phase-two environmental site assessment here, and we're, we're good, I mean, there's no issue really. So, like I say, Terricon's a local company that, you know, very reputable, and has done all that work, so we're, we're good there. They've done all the geotech work here, which is significant, obviously, so.
Okay. Questions, commission, follow-up questions?
I don't recall. No.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Please come forward and.
Okay, I was not sworn in, I didn't stand up, because I didn't, I don't.
Uh, we need to swear you in. Garrett, can you swear in? Just stand up here, please raise your right hand.
Okay. Will all persons who may give testimony this evening please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm. Do you swear, affirm, and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God?
So, help me God, I do.
Please state your name, your address, and any affiliation.
Robert Hettleston, thirty-nine oh five Beach Street, Cincinnati, four five two two seven. I am the property owner of, of the fifty-three, fifty-three fifteen, is that what it is, Beachmont Avenue? And the gentleman who just spoke here was concerned about the hillside there. Their rear dri, parking lot comes down to a small catch basin there, and then they have, I think it's a three or four-inch conduit pipe that runs down about thirty-five feet and drains off onto this property here, causing erosion problems there. That I've never, because we've got enough vegetation there, I didn't think it was going to be a problem, but since they feel it's going to be a problem with Wawa there, I, I think they should be required to take this drainage, which should go into a storm sewer, rather than drain it right down on my property there. And as far as the no further action, before I bought the property from BP, there was a NFA no further action. They took out all the, you know, the lifts, they took out everything, and, and had soil tests there also, which Wawa also have probably drilled twenty-five holes there for soil testing. But, but I just, I was really concerned about what you said about how they're concerned about the hillside there, when they're dropping all this water instead of into a storm sewer, dropping it right over the hillside there, which is causing erosion for their apartments and on my property, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
I'm sorry?
May I ask a follow-up question?
Please come forward.
Thank you.
Um, I heard that the applicant will meet the code on lighting. I did not hear how the canopy would be situated. Is it situated towards, what road is that, sorry? The road, or situated towards the hillside? So the high side, where the lighting is going to be, is going to be directly positioned towards my client's apartments. Is that right?
Paul, do you have an overhead of the regulation of the apartment?
So that'd be?
So, the, the low side will be facing Elston, the high side will be facing here, but it'll be facing toward the retaining wall, which is about fifteen to twenty feet. The top elevation of the canopy, I think, was at twenty.
And the apartments are where?
Apartment building is about here. There's a fifty-foot setback from the property line to the retaining wall. The photometric plan shows zero foot candles at the property line. The township's minimum requirement, or maximum requirements are point one foot candles at the property line, but they're showing zero foot candles at the property line.
And where's the line between city of Cincinnati and Anderson Township?
This site is completely in Anderson Township, this is the city of Cincinnati.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Correct.
And is there a reason the canopy has to face that way, or could it be turned around?
It has to face that way.
Okay.
And, um.
I'm going to ask that you just come to the commission, and we'll come back to the applicant.
Yeah. The other question then would be, is there a way to, the applicant indicated that they would meet the bare minimum standards for lighting. Is there a way to hold into a higher standard for the lighting, both for my client and the benefit of the Anderson Township residents? Because there are other residences around there. Seems like a bare minimum is probably not what we should be shooting for when it comes to this type of lighting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to step forward and address the lighting?
We can't go less than zero foot candles at the property line, that's impossible, so we're as low as you can go.
And you said directionally, it's your corporate model or trademark that you go a certain direction?
Yes, yes, and I mean, like I say, I, I can't speak for the township, obviously, but I would presume that they would prefer it this way too, so. And I just wanted to follow up on one other thing on the underground tanks. So Wawa didn't start selling fuel until nineteen ninety-six, and I think the federal regulations came into effect somewhere right around that, same time, maybe ninety-eight. Our tanks exceed the federal regulations, we have leak detection system, double-walled tanks, corrosion-proof, every single safety feature that you could possibly put into underground storage tanks, so. Shouldn't be any, and a gigantic financial incentive to not have anything go wrong, so, yes, we are very good with that, and have a thousand store track record to prove it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Want to follow up a question?
I got a question too, go ahead, John. You know, you'd stated earlier about the adjacent property stormwater being discharged on here.
Yes, which Mr. Hettleston backed up, yes.
How are you addressing that? Is that being re?
There's a, on the, there's a drainage pipe on the backside of the retaining wall.
Okay.
So like they pick up anything from the hillside and, you know.
Okay, so the swale that's sort of shown on the backside?
Yes.
Is this going to direct it to the right?
That's right, yes.
So it'll go undetained, just like it is now, but it doesn't?
No, it'll go into the underground detention system.
Will it not?
Yeah, it'll, it'll go through the underground detention system.
Okay, I see, and then what, sorry, I didn't see that.
Yep.
You got a lot of lines, so.
Commissioner Eyal?
My question was, just to be clear on the canopy?
Yes.
The canopy is sloped, we can all see that, but the lights are obviously down-directed, right?
That's right.
They're not shooting out at the.
Right, right, absolutely, they're directly directed down. And like I say, by the time, you know, the bottom side of the canopy's fifteen, and the top side's twenty-two or something, the wall is basically the same height as the canopy, so.
And what is the difference in elevation between where the, the top of the canopy is versus where the apartments? It looks on the elevation like it's.
Way lower.
Quite a bit higher, the apartments.
Yeah, the apartments are substantially higher.
Okay. Commissioner Baker? Hi, thank you.
Paul, a question, what is, you know, Anderson Township, that's up against Claremont County or Newtown or the city of Cincinnati, how do we typically handle border issues?
We, our zoning requirements, are the zoning requirements regardless of what, you know, we treated this as a residential zoning district. So we're requiring them to meet zoning adjacent to residential zoning district, regardless if it's in the city of Cincinnati or in Anderson Township. So zoning restrictions or buffers are in place regardless of it's in Newtown or the city or what, we don't treat it any differently.
And our notification of how many feet?
It went to the property owner, it's two hundred feet, and then if those are.
Doesn't matter if it's jurisdiction.
No, we still send it.
All right.
And there's a sign on the property too, so hopefully, if they don't get a direct mailing, they can see the sign or see it posted on the line.
Okay, thanks. All right, any other questions before we close it? All right, this time I'd close the, the comment part and open it up to the commission to discuss amongst, Commissioner Baker?
I am deeply sympathetic to the concerns of the adjacent residents, and if there is an adjustment or compromise that can be made on lighting, I would like to see that recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Eyal?
Yeah, quite a few comments on this. First of all, it's a tremendous, I guess we got lucky that they went to give you the easement, because this is a tremendous site plan improvement from what you offered. And I will add that Anderson has taken, is this my observation as a resident here, really has taken a leading role, you know, with suburban, this is kind of relevant, so just.
I'm going to cut you off at three minutes.
They've, the staff here and the township leadership has taken a really forward-thinking role with zoning. So when you said, oh, you know, it's, there's some neo-traditional thing and you push it out, well, they've, they've taken, if you drive down Beachmont Avenue, you look at that, it's really quite amazing for a suburban community, where we have required these buildings to be pushed out to the roadway with the parking, or in your case, the, the gas in the back, it's a tremendous improvement. So don't, don't, that's not lost on me, that this design, as it turns out, is really greatly improved, in my opinion, from, from what you brought last time. Not that it wasn't bad last time, we approved it, obviously. Mr. Suter's comments are well-taken, and I would echo what Dr. Baker says. Lighting complaints come up all the time, and it comes up all the time, in particular when you have the commercial backing on to the residential. And it doesn't matter that it's in the city of Cincinnati. We in Anderson Township happen to take zoning very seriously, whether it affects city of Cincinnati residents or our own residents, or Newtown, or Claremont County. It's very important, zoning is important in Anderson Township. And so, you know, kudos to the staff for not saying, oh, we're just going to ignore it, it's the city of Cincinnati. It's important, and I did look at the two lighting plans. One is zero, at zero foot candles, which is, like, that's the gold standard, okay? Zeros at the property line is the gold standard, I agree, you're not going to, you're not going to beat that. The other one said point one, yeah, point one, if you're out at night and there's a point one, I could probably read my book to it, but zeros, that's what you're going to shoot for. I think that elevation change, from what I heard, it's not going to be visible, but if it is, there, there, I can't speak for Anderson, but there's probably enforcement mechanisms in place that you can make a zoning complaint if you have, you know, nuisance lighting. So, the only other thing I'll say is that. So the only other thing I'll say is that the retaining wall, I was kind of on board with staff, honestly. That, that picture of that retaining wall, I don't think I've seen an uglier retaining wall. But, but I will also remind the board, I think everybody knows it, it wasn't a year or two ago. We just passed a mural plan. This board recommended approval of a mural plan, so maybe that's a nice canvas for that. I did hear that the, the better-looking retaining wall would be the more prominent one in front, and so maybe this one will give better stability. That's a really big deal. That's a large responsibility Wawa has to take to make sure they keep that adjoining property safe and stable. I think Mr. Suter's got that on the record now. I don't think we really have much jurisdiction otherwise to say much about that, but certainly the county building department will have a lot to say about it. And, yeah, I think that's, that's about all I've got to say on this.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gauthier?
So, I mean, the retaining wall change is significant compared to what was approved previously. You know, the mural sounds good, but then there's also maintenance. And who's going to maintain it, and who's going to define that the paint, the paint is peeling and it needs to be repainted? Or how are they going to address any water infiltration that's going to come on the backside? And what that does to the paints, there's a lot of things that go with the mural that, as a board, I don't think we can even anticipate. Where the previously approved architectural, you know, treatment or retaining system at least has an aesthetic built into it. So I do like that that's going to be on the front side, you know, on the street side. But, you know, the backside's still a concern of what they're requesting. And as my question, you know, sort of the service side being on Beachmont and the potential of what that may look like, whether it's the LP, storage tanks, the ice machines, or the public service, you know, entrance of electric and how many boxes and et cetera, et cetera, that may go onto it, you know, I think that needs to be addressed. You know, as far as the adjacent, I do agree with the previous ones. You know, we are held to a standard. We apply those standards across the board. There are things outside of our, our understanding and our requirements as far as the city or the county engineer, all of those have to approve the retaining walls and all the design that goes behind them. We've got to look at the zoning and how it applies to the zoning. You know, the, the site lighting, you know, it is two plans, but they all at the property line, especially adjacent to the properties and not the street, are at point-one or less. You know, some of the streets are a little bit higher than that, but, you know, again, not probably public. Unfortunately, even a zero-foot candle level, when you go from something that's not illuminated to something that is illuminated, you know, you don't see the lights, but you still have a perception of the lights, you know, just because you've kind of went from nothing to something. So, you know, that's something that, again, our standards don't address, but it is something that a person may notice, but there's no way to put perception into a zoning complaint. Okay, so we can't really regulate that either. So I know there's a lot of, we can't do anything about that in my statements, but just wanted to put those in the conversation, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll attempt a motion on this in zoning case. One, 2024, let's see, one, 2024 PUD, originally approved January 22nd, 2024, and now requesting a major amendment tonight for the construction of a 6,372-square-foot Wawa fuel convenience store with additional items, parking dumpster, landscaping, et cetera, at an impervious surface ratio of sixty-seven point five. The motion is that the zoning commission approve the application for the amended PUD and also grant the requested variances, adopting the findings of staff in support of those variances. And the variances approved are, as stated on page two of the staff report. The requested approval for the signage is not approved. The requested variance for the signage is not approved. However, the prior approval of 337 square feet will stand. Further conditions added are that the L, liquid propane and ice displays be moved to a non-prominent location on the side of the building. They can remain outside. And also that some sort of screening be added for the utility inlet points to the building, to the extent that can be approved by the county building department. And the retaining walls will keep the, what's the word? The architectural features. Who worded that?
Talking about the composition?
We're going to, yeah. Yeah, and we're, and we'll, we'll keep the staff recommendation on this, that the retaining walls keep the architectural details and not be the cast-in-place flat walls.
And which lighting plan?
The, the lighting plan is going to have to be the one acceptable to the staff that they sta, that they reviewed, which I presume is the one showing zero foot candles at the property line, but it will be the one as Paul.
We'll get clarification. There is one dated 10/7/24, and then the other one was dated 9/30/24. So I think the 10/7 is the most current, but we'll.
Okay, that's the one we'll go with then.
Okay.
That's it.
Sheriff, you're good. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Second by Dr. Baker. Can you read?
Yes.
Mr. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Gauthier?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Passes four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
So can we have any additional business?
We do not have any additional business. Just a reminder, in November, the meeting is a week earlier because of Thanksgiving, so it'd be on November the 18th. We're anticipating three. We have two. Yes, we do.
Okay, we're going to, let me close out the meeting real quick. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thanks.
Just raise, we're good, okay. Sorry, sir. We're closed.
You were right. I was wrong.
No, no, no. We're, if you want to make a comment, we're out, we're out of session now.